The time is 6:00 PM. We will now call this regular public meeting of the Board of Trustees of Umla Independent School District to order. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice for this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. The time is 6:00 PM. The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Thank you for joining us tonight. Remember that the meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. The Umla ISD Board of Trustees meet monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take action from recommendations of the superintendent. The Board receives the agenda and all supporting documentation several days in advance of the regular meetings, which allows us to ask and receive answers to many of our questions in advance of the regular meeting. Therefore lengthy discussions are not always necessary on every agenda item, but as a Board, we do have the appropriate knowledge and preparation for responses regarding the content of the meeting tonight. There are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior and/or comments will not be allowed. And with that, our first item. Our colors tonight are presented by the Summer Creek High School Army JROTC. I would ask everyone to stand for our pledge allegiance to the Texas flag.
Left, left, right. Left, 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 right. Left, left, mark time, march. Left, 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 right. Colors. Ho. Left, face. Present, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored with the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Orders, arms. Right, face. Forward, march.
Thank you very much. Moving to our next agenda item, commendations and recognitions. Dr. Fagan, can you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. We're very happy to have all of you here tonight. In tonight's inspiring moment, Riley Finch, an eighth grader at Kingwood Middle School, shows off her new school and provides a glimpse into what is occurring at campuses throughout the district.
From Charles Street Stadium to North Belt Elementary, Kingwood Middle School, and everywhere in between, Umla ISD is reinvesting in our communities. This year at Kingwood Middle School, we started the new school year in a brand-new facility, and it is amazing. The original Kingwood Middle School was completed in 1977. That's the year Darth Vader was brought to life in the original Star Wars. My parents weren't even born yet. My family has a lot of history in this school. My grandma went here, also my mom did, and basically everyone on my mom's side of the family, including me. Recently, the community was invited to come take one last look at the old school and really notice the difference between the old and the new.
A good friend of mine, we toured the old KMS just a minute ago. Her and I were in culinary class together back in 2002, seventh grade, and we had just a plain old classroom with electric burners, regular cabinets you would see in a, you know, standard classroom, and we just, that was it to work with. This is, you know, restaurant-quality culinary equipment. This is everything, you know, adults treat them. They got cuisine art mixers, got pots and pans. This is for middle school.
I started teaching at Kingwood Middle School in 1984, and I was scared to death because it was actually my first year as a band director. This new building has, I think, has opened up a lot of people's eyes to possibilities. And I have seen a lot of changes over the years, but they've all been good, and of course, this is like the best of the best.
My wife and I just thought, you know, we're gonna move back for the boys. Education here is still top-notch, and to see, you know, this facility being built is really attractive to us to come back from the heights here into the suburbs of Kingwood.
And reinvestment in the Umla ISD community does not stop there. Every campus in Umla ISD is scheduled to get a new outdoor learning and fitness area. The new playground at Woodland Hills Elementary was recently completed, and it is a sight to behold. The theme, it's fairy tale, and it even includes a dragon. How fun is that? Park Lakes and Elm Grove Elementary Schools are next in line, and playgrounds will continue to be installed until every campus has a magnificent new outdoor fitness and play area. And more projects are on the horizon. Ross Sterling Middle School, Foster Elementary, and North Belt Elementary are all scheduled to be rebuilt. Plans are being discussed for Ross Sterling and Foster Elementary, and they begin the design phase next year. North Belt Elementary, which will be renamed North Bend Elementary, is currently under construction. It's being relocated to a beautiful spot just a short distance away. Tucked in amongst the trees, it will resemble a lodge and have grade-level-themed pods such as the rainforest, the frozen tundra, and the moon. North Bend Elementary will be a retreat for learning and exploration. And speaking of under construction, Umla High School is in its first phase of a three-phase renovation. Oh, and don't forget, Charles Street Stadium has recently been completed and is currently in use by the soccer and football teams. Umla ISD continues to reinvest in students, teachers, and the community, and is committed to honoring longtime traditions while creating excitement and engagement for students. The journey's underway and continues to get better. I can't wait to see what's next. Oh, looks like I have to get to class. Bye.
All right, Riley, that was excellent. A future actress in the making for sure. We're excited for the community to enjoy these upgraded facilities across the district. We have planned some very special events to celebrate them. Next week, there'll be a playground dedication and open house at Woodland Hills Elementary School on Tuesday, October 25th. Then on Thursday, October 27th, the alumni of Umla High School will help us dedicate the newly renovated Charles Street Stadium. We look forward to seeing everyone there. I have to say that on Friday afternoon, I got a text from the principal at Woodland Hills with a picture of all these people on the playground, and she said, "I just want you to know that this is the place to be in our community, that everybody comes here after school and uses this to be together." So it was a great Friday afternoon text, I have to say. So thank you for sending that. It went to Lucy also and Christie, so we were happy to see that. Next, tonight is very special as we celebrate our Secondary Teachers of the Year. Next month, we will celebrate our Elementary Teachers of the Year. I'd like to ask Mr. Donnie Baudron, Assistant Superintendent of Schools, to come to the podium and introduce our Secondary Teachers of the Year.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. Fagan, it is my pleasure to get to introduce all of the Secondary Teachers of the Year, and we are gonna start with our middle schools. From Atascocita Middle School, James Hoag, he was the Campus Teacher of the Year, and he's also being honored tonight as a district finalist. From Creekwood Middle School, Janelle Hunt, she was the Campus Teacher of the Year. From Umla Middle School, Richard Davis, he was the Campus Teacher of the Year, and he's also being honored as a district finalist. From Kingwood Middle School, Jessica Offe, she was the Campus Teacher of the Year. From Riverwood Middle School, Jordan Stoll, she was the Campus Teacher of the Year. From Ross Sterling Middle School, Laquanta Irvin Smith was the Campus Teacher of the From Timberwood Middle School, Brandy West was the Campus Teacher of the Year. Ms. West is unable to attend tonight, so we'll make sure we get her award to her. From Westlake Middle School, Gracie Zamaron, she was the Campus Teacher of the Year. And from Wood Creek Middle School, Gwinnan Gable, she was the Campus Teacher of the Year. Okay, moving on to our high schools, I'm proud to recognize, from Atascocita High School, Mark Pyatt, he was the Campus Teacher of the Year, and he's also being honored as a district finalist. Mr. Pyatt was not able to attend tonight, so we will get his plaque to him. From Umla High School, Ashley Noel, she was the Campus Teacher of the Year, and she was also unable to attend tonight, but we will also get her plaque to her. From Kingwood High School, Cindy Welch. Hey, Cindy. She was the Campus Teacher of the Year, and she was also honored as a district finalist. From Kingwood Park High School, Corey Gaspar, he was the Campus Teacher of the Year. From Guy M. Sconzo Early College, Rachel Palmer, she was the Campus Teacher of the From the Community Learning Center, Tina Ewing, she was the Campus Teacher of the And finally, from Summer Creek High School, Nathaniel Woolley, he was the Campus Teacher of the Year, he was also being honored as a district finalist, and he was the Secondary Teacher of the Year. All right, so if we can just give this group, this fine group, a final round of applause for their amazing work. We love our teachers, and we love them more when they're well-rested and ready for tomorrow's school day. So we're gonna let them know that it's okay if they want to slide out the back doors. Thank you so much.
Wow, this moves a lot. As you all know, our staff members go above and beyond. Umla ISD is incredibly lucky to have the quality of staff that we have, and we know that our students and our community benefit from it greatly. Ms. Jerry Monbarren, Chief Community Engagement Officer, is going to come to the podium and introduce our superstaffers.
Yes, our employees do go above and beyond each day to meet the needs of our students, and we want to recognize these employees for their important work in keeping Umla ISD great. So each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held, and three honorees receive additional recognition at a school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to a sponsor. And so this month's Superstaffer Awards is sponsored by Whataburger, and so each of the individuals tonight are gonna receive a $100 gift card from Whataburger. In fact, I'd like to say that this will be the year of Whataburger because they have bought these sponsorships for the entire year, so. Now, yeah? Unfortunately, there is no one here from Whataburger tonight, but I still have the gift cards, that's the most important thing. But I have this next best thing, which is an Education Foundation Board member who's going to help me pass the prizes out tonight, so Scott Brady from Joiner Architects, will you come help me, sir? Thank you very much. So being honored as our elementary superstaffer tonight is Angelina Armstrong, a fourth-grade teacher from Shadow Forest Elementary School. Her principal, Lisa Lackey, is gonna join her up here, and Angelina, come on over here, and Scott's gonna hand you some prizes. So let me tell you about Angelina. She's had an amazing start as an Umla ISD teacher. So due to changes in enrollment numbers, Angelina was moved to a fourth-grade teaching position the week before school started. She took on this change with a positive attitude, embraced this opportunity to continue to grow and learn as a professional. She has been a collaborative and supportive teammate, has taken the initiative to learn new resources and curriculum, and has developed a positive classroom community of engaged learners. Shadow Forest Elementary is fortunate to have Angelina as part of our family. So being honored as our secondary superstaffer tonight is the CTE Will Teacher from the Career and Technical Education Department, Erin Holling. Joining Erin up here is Dr. Deenarder Bazil, a CTE Coordinator. So Mr. Holling is one of 12 CTE Will Teachers, which is an innovative course that we offer here in Umla ISD. He teaches the Health Science and Animal Science Module and just completed his first nine-week rotation at Creekwood Middle School. Mr. Holling has gone above and beyond the normal duties of a teacher in providing an extraordinary experience for his students. He has attended every feeder-campus CTE school event, and most recently stayed the whole day for the sixth-grade cult day on a Saturday. He brings such a high positive energy level which is infectious to all that he comes in contact with. Congratulations, Mr. Holling. Being honored tonight as our support superstaffer is the Dyslexia Specialist, Allison Doolin. So joining Allison up front is her supervisor, Mary Ian Flowers, and Laura Dowdy, the Assistant Director of Responsive Services. So let me tell you about Allison. She continually goes above and beyond to ensure the dyslexia department is meeting the needs of the students and campuses we serve. She thinks outside the box to find creative solutions while continuing to ensure we remain responsive to the shifts in the Texas dyslexia landscape. She mentored our new district specialist, Amy Green, and now as she transitions to joining the dyslexia team. Allison is in the first cohort to become a Certified Structured Literacy Dyslexia Interventionist through the Reading by Design Accredited Pathway. She makes herself available throughout the day and evening to ensure all students, the specialists, and campuses have all their needs met. Congratulations, Allison.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
So September was Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Jerry Monbarren is going to share how Umla ISD participated through Gold Fight Win.
Yeah, great. Thank you, yes. So in September, Umla ISD goes gold in a big way. Our whole community, our campuses, support this. This is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and although our campuses do some amazing things that we're about to learn about, this whole initiative is led by representatives from important nonprofit organizations, and I'd like for them to come up. So Shiana Kohler and A.J. Hack, and y'all are coming up, they are representing both Mothers Against Cancer, Addie's Faith, and then also L3 Foundation is the other one. Those are very important nonprofits in our community, and we are so grateful for what they do. So come on up here and tell us how Umla ISD went gold in September.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate your time this evening. September was a really wonderful month. It was a very exciting month to go gold, so thank you guys for all of your participation and support. I just wanna share a couple of the highlights that I personally felt and saw. I was kind of the elementary coordinator, and so the three pillars of Gold Fight Win are awareness, education, and then fundraising is the third one. So we really wanna focus on awareness and education, and so one thing that was really cool this year is we were able to create these bags of gold that we gave to all of the elementary schools, and they had four books that the librarians and guidance counselors were reading to the students about childhood cancer, and so they're children's books, storybooks with photos and lovely stories that are told from a child's perspective, and they were being read and enjoyed throughout the district, and so that was really special. That was a highlight for me. And then another really awesome thing is we had a student from KHS that he is a childhood cancer survivor, and he read one of these books to the students at Green Tree Elementary School. So he went as a survivor, wearing his Gold Fight Win shirt, and read the book to them, and they recorded it so that all the students in their school could see this young man reading it to them, and it was just really, really cool. I mean, it was very, very personal and touching, and so we have that video, and I don't know, maybe we'll share that with other schools because it's really special. And then one thing that was really special to me was at one of these really awesome varsity football games that we had during the month of September, I was able to meet some families of other cancer warriors and cancer survivors, and I met these two different families that both of their boys had been through the same cancer, and one of them, their son was three, and he was currently fighting cancer, and one of them, their son was in middle school, and he was finished with his cancer journey. And the moms came together, having never met each other, and they just embraced one another, and they exchanged phone numbers, and they just looked at each other, and the woman who was, you know, currently fighting with her son, she just looked at this other woman with such hope, you know, she looked up to her because she's been through it. And even the dads started hugging, and the dad, who his son currently had cancer, he was speaking to me, I'm a mother of a survivor, and he says, "It's so isolating. Thank you for doing this." He's like, "I've never met other families that their kids have had cancer, and he just opened up to me." This, you know, big, huge guy, and he said, "Thank you so much. I felt so isolated through my son's disease. Thank you for bringing us out into the spotlight." So I just wanted to share that with you guys because it was really meaningful, and that's some of the best things about Gold Fight Win to me, and of course to Shiana as well.
So yes, the elementars were amazing, secondaries were as well, middle schools had tons of pep rallies and Gold Fight Win football and volleyball games, but again, what touches my heart the most, again, is the honorees at the varsity football games. And I'll share, my story that impacted me the most this year was, it was at the K Park Football Game, and we had done the coin toss with the honorees, but then afterward, we walked the track with the families, and they get, the siblings get to be there too, and they get to meet the cheerleaders and the mascots, and then we go to band and drill team and, you know, all these different groups, and then as we're walking back, an older sibling of an honoree, she's 13, and she goes, "You know, it's so frustrating." And I was like, "What do you mean?" She goes, "My little sister gets all the attention usually." She said, "She's a survivor, that's great," but she goes, "She was two when she was diagnosed. She doesn't remember having cancer. I remember my mom not being at home when I needed her. I remember that she was always at the hospital." And she goes, "But my little sister usually gets to do the cool things." This is a 13-year-old talking member. And she goes, "But tonight, I got to do some of those cool things." And so thank you to the entire district. Turner staff was amazing, the referees were so engaging this year with the little ones, I mean, the tiny ones, the players, the coaches, all the other organizations, ROTC, Student Council, I mean, you name it, that they were there. Thank you, Jerry, for coordinating everything, but they were always very loving to all of them and including the whole families, and we just always need to remember that the child has cancer, but the family, the whole in family, is impacted, and so this is a big deal, the whole month, for the whole family. And so thank you to the district for supporting this. There's a lot of intangible blessings that don't show up necessarily in pictures or on financial shirt sales or something, but there's a lot more to this, and so we thank you so much for your support.
Thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. I absolutely love the photos of the big football players walking out to midfield, holding the hands of these little kids in their yellow t-shirts. It's just, it's the sweetest thing ever, so anyway, I think it's a win-win for everybody involved on those games. So that concludes our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fagan. The next item is public comment. The Board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than one minute. Remember that the Board may not discuss or act upon any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the Board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during the meeting. In addition, the Board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students or their parents, by employees, and by citizens may be heard in accordance with Board policies. Each of these processes provides that if a resolution cannot be achieved administratively, the person may appeal the administrative decision to the Board as a properly posted agenda item. Copies of our district policies on public participation in meetings and filing complaints are available on the Umla ISD website. Our first speaker tonight is Gail Sampley.
Madam President, point of order. I would like to move that we allow, we only have four speakers, I believe, signed up for tonight, that we allow the speakers three minutes instead of just one minute.
Mr. Scarfo, unfortunately, we don't have a posted agenda for such discussion tonight.
Well, public speaking is on the, public comments are on the agenda, so we can't
Yes, sir.
make a motion to make a change to how long they can speak.
That's correct. We would have to post any proposed action from the Board on the agenda in order for the Board to vote on it.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Gail Sampley, and I'm here to talk to you for just one moment about my opposition to book bans in Umla ISD schools. Tonight, I stand in support of the district administration, school librarians and teachers who provide access to a variety of very carefully curated books and instructional materials. Books enrich and support the curriculum and are vital to a well-rounded education. As duly elected school board members, I encourage you to defend every person's fundamental, constitutionally-protected access to reading materials. I do believe that parents have the right to direct their own child's reading without dictating what books other people's children are allowed to read. I denounce the banning of books in schools and in libraries. You don't have to be a historian to know that the people banning books
Thank you.
are never the good guys.
Thank you very much.
The policies being considered that the public had the chance to review seem to be shaped by outside forces and elected bodies. We are Umla Independent School District. Who exactly are we independent from? We did not elect TASB, American Library Association, or any other organization to represent us on this Board. All materials should be assured that they are appropriate. Appropriate means suitable in age and developmental ability. Materials should not violate the Texas Penal Code. Currently, you are in violation. These policies are vague and lazily constructed. The district seems to be relying on legal advice that protects materials, not children, supposedly due to a fiduciary duty. If you were so worried about fiduciary duty, we wouldn't be spending nearly $4 million to beautify a detention pond. The policy does state the final authority lies with the Board. With authority comes responsibility. You are the responsibility to protect the children and the parental rights in this district. It also makes you
Thank you.
the groomers.
Presently, the district is considering updating our instructional and library materials policies. My concern regarding the policies is that My concern regarding the policies is that parents are not considered a part of the process in choosing and distributing instructional materials, whether in the library or in the classroom. Oftentimes, parents are unaware of the lesson being taught until their child informs them of it. Furthermore, laws are referenced in the document and unfortunately are broken, are being broken. For instance, the document cites the Texas Penal Code 43.24A and B, which references harmful material, which deals with not, with not allowing material that promotes arousing children sexually. Due to time constraints, I'm unable to read what it states. A couple of months ago, Tracy Shannon, Megan Fast, and myself read excerpts from books from, found in our district. The readings were very sexually explicit, and those books are still in our libraries. We are not wanting to ban books such as To Kill a Mockingbird. We are wanting to protect children from material that is not appropriate for children and has no educational value. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ted LeBlanc. Okay, it doesn't seem that he is here, so we'll move on. Next, we're going to move on to comments by individual board members. And we have a pretty hefty agenda this evening, so although I love board comment, and we are going to have it, but because we typically focus, you know, on the fantastic things happening in our district, I would like to ask each of my board colleagues to be limited on your remarks or have no remarks at all if you so choose. This is in an effort to focus on board business and to be mindful of our staff members who have had a very long day today. Is there anyone that has a comment that they would like to, to share? Mr. Sitton?
Yeah, Dr. Fagan already mentioned Woodland Hills Playground Dedication and Open House on the 25th, Charles Street Alumni Reception on the 27th at 5:30. Also, on the 27th, Tassita High School and North Shore High School play at Turner at 7:00. That's probably going to be for the district championship. UMBLE High School, Kingwood High School renew their rivalry on the 28th. Volleyball, all of our high school volleyball teams are going to be in the playoffs. It's the first time UMBLE High School's been in volleyball playoffs in many years. Breakfast with the board two weeks ago was fantastic. Want to commend Dr. Johnson and her entire team on the amazing things they are doing with curriculum and local accountability. And last but not least, September was a great month for Gold Fight Win.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Scarfo?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, just a few things to cheer about. Our UMBLE ISD bans advance area competition to the next level, Tassita, Kingwood Park, Summer Creek, and Kingwood. And then also, this list is a mile long for our Kingwood Park Journalism students. And Mr. Sitton's daughter is part of that illustrious group. And I'll tell you what, not only did they win 23 individual awards, they also took home the Big Kahuna. That's the first-place sweepstake award that goes to the best high school for journalism in the entire state, not just the area, but the entire state. So, congratulations to her and all her mates. And of course, the advisor, Ms. Ortiz, and her, her daughter also won some, some great awards at that, too. So a real long list. Also, just a nod to Mr. Ivy, who was the Honor Officer of the Year for UMBLE ISD. A number of us were at the luncheon honoring him and other law enforcement officers. Congratulations to Summer Creek Senior, Sophia Plata. She was given a, she was surprised to get a silver ticket audition to American Idol by the producers. And there's only one student in the entire Houston area that gets that. So again, another, another top thing. And then you might have read about him in the newspaper, but a junior at Tassita High School, Andre Scott, he was selected as a teen ambassador for the American Heart Association. And with that, he got to attend a conference at the White House about food, nutrition, and health. And he was only one of 12 high school participants in that, in that program, from the nation. Again, that's pretty good, you know, to say that. And his goal is to be a cardiologist, so Godspeed for him on his career path, and hope that will work out. And then congratulations to, excuse me, Kingwood Park High School. Their fourth tiny home was moved to the Langtree Retreat. That's, that's really, that's an amazing thing, that program. I remember when it started years ago, and they, they got their first one. And I will, I would just say this, I don't have any, we have on the agenda, one of the consent items is the revised policies. I just want to thank Dr. Fagan and Ms. Mayor and staff for incorporating the changes I had asked for. Hopefully, it will pass. I think it really does help give some clarity to that. And no one's looking to, I don't think anybody's, that I've talked to on this board who is for censorship, but we do need to meet the guidelines or meet the statutes that, to protect children from what the statutes declare is pornographic material. And just, I'll just close with this. It, I have to say, it bothers me that we are limiting public comment to one minute, especially when we only have three, four, six, seven people. I think it's our job to engage. And we, as board members, in my opinion, we work for the constituents of the district and to allow them a chance, especially when they take time out of their schedules to come here to present their concerns or whatever it might be. I, I think it's very, I would say disrespectful to limit them to a minute. I understand when we were going through the pandemic and we had 50, 7, 500 people signed up to speak, all right, you got to limit it. And a lot of times, they were speaking on the same actual matter. But I really would hope we would reconsider that time limit because I think it's, it's not in the spirit of transparency, engagement, and, you know, we say we're all about being, you know, family and all of that. So I would hope we consider that in the future, that we would go back to at least a minimum of three minutes when we have, you know, less than, you know, five, six, seven speakers. I think we can afford that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is comments by administration. Dr. Fagan?
Thank you so much. We did a lot of administrative sort of stuff in the accommodations and recognitions. And so it's been a great start to the year. I think everybody had a wonderful October break. I continue to hear from all my colleagues in the other districts that the UMBLE calendar is the calendar to have, and more and more districts are changing to it because their, their teachers want it. So that makes sense to me. And I received a lot of positive feedback about that. Now we're back in school, and everything is, is going pretty well. Congratulations to our campuses that have had safety visits and have done extremely well. And Mr. Perkins will say a little bit more about that later.
Thank you. We will now have updates from our board associations and committees. First committee is the Advocacy Committee. Mrs. Parker?
The Advocacy Committee will be meeting on the 24th with Judge Larissa Corduba.
Thank you. Audit Committee, Ms. Morrison is not present this evening. Building and Planning Committee, Mr. Sitton?
Yes, Madam President. Ms. Morrison did tell me to announce that our, she had nothing to report for audit, but the next meeting will be November 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So Building and Planning, our next meeting will be next Tuesday, the 25th. There's several items on the agenda tonight. We've got several representatives of some of our community partners here in the room. You're going to see three architectural recommendations. Joiner doing some things at Centennial. You might remember they were the original architect for Centennial, so that makes sense. They also, it's being proposed that they do the Mosaic building, the new construction for that. PBK Architects, moving from Phase 1 to Phase 2 of UMBLE High School, doing additions and T-building work for Summer Creek High School. Middle School 11 is their recommendation, and then some of the outdoor classrooms that we've all seen renditions of. We also have Huckabee here. They're being recommended for improvement projects at RMS and CMS. You're also going to see a couple deductive change orders, and then one guaranteed, guaranteed amount not to exceed adjustment to the UMBLE High School project. And two more items, resolution for us to look at to sell the old Lakeland property and also the purchase of some additional property that we have access and availability to. So it was a busy meeting.
Yes. Thank you. Board Superintendent Evaluation Committee, that's me, nothing to report. Finance Committee?
No report. We have, we meet next month. All right, I looked at Mr. Bieda, make sure I got my calendar correct. Thanks.
Thank you. Education Foundation, Mr. Kirchhoff?
Thank you. I just want to say, the two ladies that spoke the Gold Fight Win and spoke about the kids, that was amazing. So, foundation update. Just two quick updates. The foundation will soon be wrapping up their employee giving campaign. We have always had a strong turnout from our employees for this, and I'm sure this year won't be any different. So to those of you who have already made a donation to the foundation, thank you. For those of you that haven't, get after it, get to it. You only have 13 more days. Danny Contreras is the chair of the golf tournament that's coming up on November 7th at the Clubs of Houston. He has been putting in overtime lately to ensure it's a great event. You can still register as an individual player, team, or sponsor on the foundation's website. We are changing kids' lives. Please, if you have the November 7th open, you can still sponsor, play as an individual player, go to the foundation's website. And to thank you, Danny Contreras, for all your hard work. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Kingwood Super Neighborhood Council, Mr. Holmes?
Sure, just a few. Wanted to make sure that people are using 311 for, you know, clogged inlets, debris on roads, things of that nature, still in hurricane season. Traffic signals at the 494 intersection, they've been adjusted again to help with the flow of traffic and, you know, the construction. So hopefully, that is helping. Cameras, there's three, there's three, that's why, tongue-in-cheek, right? I know. There's three cameras that have been put in Kingwood to help with any nefarious activity, and it actually is helping. I think there was an actual testimonial where they were able to track a vehicle that had done something illegal. And this particular camera system can even search paper tags. So they have three in Kingwood. And no update on the drainage issues, other than all three bids that came in, they were higher than the available budget, so they're trying to rework that. That's all I have, Madam.
Thank you very much. Action items from closed session. Item 4A, personnel recommendations. Mr. Kirchhoff, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations with addendum as presented in closed session.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6.
I went up twice.
Item 4B, student expulsion. Mr. Kirchhoff, do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the administration's recommendation of student expulsion as presented in closed session.
Second.
Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Item 4C, withdrawal of proposed termination of term contract. Mr. Kirchhoff, do I have a motion?
I move that the board withdraw the proposed termination of the term contract of Stephen Escobedo and authorize the superintendent to provide all notices and take all actions necessary for the same.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Moving to item 5, our consent agenda. 5A, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, September 13th, 2022. Consent, item 5B, bond fund transfers and amendments. Consent, item 5C, budgetary transfers and amendments. Consent, item 5D, approval of goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate or $25,000 individually. Consent, item 5E, tax refunds. Consent, item 5F, waiver of penalty and interest. Consent, item 5G, amendment to board policy, DFE Local. Consent, item 5H, board authorization of inter-local agreements. Consent, item 5I, approval of RFP number 2021-005R, general merchandise. Consent, item 5J, approval of RFP number 2022-101, miscellaneous instructional material vendors. Consent, item 5K, approval of RFP number 2023-12, original equipment manufacturer of small kitchen equipment, parts, and supplies. Consent, item 5L, approval of RFP number 2023-102, services, repairs, maintenance, installation, district-wide. Consent, item 5M, update to board policies, EFA Local and EFB Local. Final action?
Pull.
Item 5M, pulled. Item 5N, architect selection for Centennial Elementary T-B buildings. Consent, item 5O, architect selection for UMBLE High School Phase 2. Consent, item 5P, architect selection for Middle School 11. Consent, item 5Q, architect selection for Mosaic Campus. Consent, item 5R, architect selection for outdoor classroom. Consent, item 5S, architect selection for Summer Creek High School addition. Consent, item 5T, architect selection for Summer Creek High School addition. T-b buildings.
That's correct. It would be for architect selection for the Summer Creek High School T-b buildings.
Okay, let me repeat that. Item 5T, architect selection for Summer Creek High School's T-building addition. Item 5U, architect selection for RMS/CMS Improvement Project. Consent, item 5V, deductive change orders. Consent, item 5W, guaranteed maximum price amendment 5, UMBLE High School. Consent, item 5X, resolution authorizing the sale approximately of 8.27 acres, former Lakeland Elementary School. Consent, item 5Y, purchase of real property, approximately 197 lots in Harris County, Texas, AIG. Consent, item 5Z, general waiver of state reading instrument for 7th grade. Consent, item 5AA, SB 15 Virtual Learning Plan. Consent, item 5BB, Texas A&amp;M AgriLife Extension, 4-H Adjunct Faculty Agreement and Resolution Regarding Extracurricular Status of 4-H Organization. Consent. Mr. Kirchhoff, can I get? CC. I do not have a CC.
I apologize, Madam President. It's at the bottom of the agenda. It's the additional child nutrition staff positions for 2022, '23.
One second here.
And that would be item 5 double C.
Item 5 CC, additional child nutrition staff positions for 2022, 2023. Consent. Thank you.
Ready for me?
Mr. Kirchhoff, can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
I move to approve consent agendas, items 5A through 5CC, exclusive of the pulled items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes, 6-0. Let's move back to item M, which was pulled by you, Mr. Sitton?
We need a, we need a motion first.
That's correct, Mr. Sitton. We require a motion to bring it to the floor.
Okay.
I move to adopt and approve board policy revisions listed.
Is there a second?
Sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's take a look at M. Mr. Sitton?
Yeah, my only thing is, Dr. Fagan, I know that you all did a lot of work on the front end. You've done a lot of work on some revisions. I just want to be, be comfortable that, that you and your staff are comfortable with the revisions. Is there Is there, again, I know y'all put a lot of work in on the front end and on the revisions that were brought up at the last meeting, so I want to feel comfortable that y'all are comfortable before we vote.
Well, there has been a great deal of work, Dr. Lee has worked with Stephanie and Terry Perkins, we've had librarians, media specialists who have been part of a pretty significant committee to review all of these things, work together, to come together on common language for several hours, I would say. And our original recommendation last month, I think is very similar to the recommendation this evening, it's just that instead of just referencing the statute, the statutory language is actually inserted into the policy, making it a bit longer and somewhat, you know, more explicit in that way. And so I think that while our preferred version was the version we brought last time that we were, we sent to the board today as version two, we're comfortable with the recommendation of the, the board's policy as it is, version three on the agenda tonight also.
Okay, any further discussion?
Madam President, I would note that there is a typo in the version that's on the board agenda.
Yes, that is correct.
So I apologize for that, that's entirely on me, it has to do with page five of EFBA and page four of EFA. The idea is, the last word in that paragraph should be appear, not appeal, otherwise it just simply doesn't make sense, so I apologize for the typo.
Okay. So in the motion, is that something we can just fix on our end since you've noted that?
I did not find it to be a substantive change, because otherwise, the idea is how to handle the appeal, so an appeal would have already had to have occurred, so I can simply fix that on the back end, I just wanted it noted for the minutes and for the board.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes, six zero, thank you. There are no action items on the agenda this evening, next is our information items, item 7A House Bill Three District Goals and Targets, Dr. Fagan, I understand that we have a presentation this evening?
We do, as required by House Bill Three, Ms. Hayhurst loves this presentation, we would like to update the board on the legally required elements of House Bill Three presentation, but as always, we also like to highlight the things that the Umbel ISD family values most and is working very diligently to measure well, because we want 100% of our students to grow every year in reading, and we want 100% of our students to be college, career, and/or military-ready as defined by us, and all of that wonderful team you see back there that works on this every single day to make sure every single student and every single pathway has a robust experience that prepares them for their life's journey, the one that they choose and select as part of a personalized counseling program. So this is a major part of, of what we're doing, and, and we absolutely embrace the accountability of measuring our progress on every child reading, every child college, career, military-ready, and there's no funny business in ours, we're not handing out Microsoft Word exams to, to beef up the numbers, although Lark and stuff would look really good then. We're not, we're not handing out other low-level OSHA requirements to, to beef up those numbers, we're legitimately working with each and every child on his or her pathway to be successful, we embrace our baseline data, and we are very proud of the progress that we have and continue to make. And Dr. Johnson is going to bring us equally wonderful math assessments, so that we can show growth in math every year too, so we're very proud of where we are, but with that, I'd like to present this really fantastic team of folks who has turned the Queen Mary, honestly, into a personalized learning experience for every single student, every single pathway, robust and available. So with that, Ms. Hayes-Hurst.
So, thank you, Dr. Fagan, board and, and audience, one of the things that you'll notice is it's a different group behind me this evening, which I'm excited about, so last week we had an opportunity to dive deeply into the literacy assessments, and, and with that, what you were able to see is because of intentional assessments, intentional programming, we are able to move that needle, and I think that after tonight you'll also hear that same message of intentionality. Dr. Fagan really has front-loaded, and so I can go quickly through the opening part of this. As you recall, this is a requirement from the state with the House Bill Three, that we, on an annual basis, are measuring our progress in both third grade literacy, third grade math, and CCMR. And so as she stated, while the state may require us to do that, and when you look at these goals, these are goals that we established two years ago based on baseline, remember for goal one and two, it's third grade STAR meets, not approaches, and we had that conversation again last week with breakfast with the board. From that, these are our targets, and by 2025, and what we saw with our actual results from 2022 is, and I think a lot of that has to do with our literacy assessments, our focus on balanced literacy, as well as our intentional focus on our math curriculum that we have seen significant gains in STAR, again, meets, reading and math. CCMR appears that there is a drop, and that's one of the things that obviously these people are going to talk about, because again, number one, we're dealing with a lagging indicator, and I know Dr. Lee is going to discuss that, number two, as Dr. Fagan mentioned, we don't play games. What we do with CCMR is data that truly is going to help us understand if children are genuinely CCMR, not something that we can put numbers on a screen for an annual report. And so with that, I am excited to turn this over to Dr. Lee and her team, and I'll let her introduce them.
Melissa?
Thank you, good evening, everybody, thank you for that. Yeah, we're going to go through, oh, I don't know this button, okay, there, nope. There we go, thank you. So we've all seen our local indicator graph before that Dr. Warren Roan has put together for us. When we look at the class of 2022, Ms. Hayhurst mentioned this is a lagging indicator, and these results were started back in 2020, which is when we really started looking at more local data, more informed data, not just what the state was. It also happened to be the year that the people you see back here and I all came together under one umbrella, which is a pretty innovative move for Umbel ISD. Most districts don't have their, their college, career and military group paired with their counselors, so that we can really focus on that personalization for our students, but 2020 was the year that Umbel ISD made that shift. And one of the things I want to look at when we talk about some of those lagging indicators is looking at our class of 2022, we're currently only seeing their junior year data. So a lot of what you're going to hear from Dr. Uticret and Mr. Lesweare when they talk about some of the information for their respective departments, is a lot of those CCMR indicators aren't available till their senior year, so we're missing some of that data, is it's a lagging indicator, and that will come along a little later when we get the full data from the state. But in the meantime, as our department came together in 2020, we recognized that that class of 2022, who were sophomores when the pandemic hit and when we went into virtual shutdown, sophomore year is when a lot of that pivotal CCMR information starts for those kids. Most kids only get one or two maybe opportunities to take some of those CCMR opportunities as a freshman, it's pretty rare. Sophomore year is when they really start digging deeply into dual credit classes, AP exams, they get to take the PSAT, a lot of opportunities like that. So that was a pivotal year for our class of 2020, and unfortunately, they just missed out on a lot of those opportunities. So we tried to really look at how could we catch some of that group up as they went into their junior and senior years to give them more of those opportunities that they didn't get as early on as some of their predecessor classes. So some of the things we look at that, that kind of affected that group was that limited PSAT, SAT opportunity for them, reduced AP participation, there were opportunities to take AP online for them that year, but it was very hit or miss, so that affected some of the numbers for that group. It was the first time they had to sign up by November to take the AP exam, previously they were given up until the spring semester to do that, so some of them simply just missed the deadline to sign up. We now have a lot more processes in place to ensure that our kids don't miss those deadlines. Despite that, however, Umbel ISD students still outperformed across the state when it came to AP exams for our class of 2022. And as we mentioned too, a minute there ago, most, I wasn't saying most, a lot of our industry-based certifications in CTE aren't available till their senior year, so a lot of those kids missed some of those pivotable opportunities as they were working up to it. So what we're going to talk to you about, those were the things that maybe were hindering us, but we want to talk about all the things we've put in place since then to really address some of these moving forward, so I'd like to ask Dr. Tong Uticret to come up and talk about some of our college readiness supports that we have put in place.
Thank you so much. So we know that even though there was a lot of things going against us, we need to be able to move forward, and so some of the things that we've done on the college readiness side, one of the things has been instituting a TSIA district-wide testing. Now, for those that aren't familiar, the Texas Success Initiative Assessment is a college readiness assessment that every student in Texas must take if they want to take a college-level class. And so previously, we were at the mercy of a lot of our community college partnerships with Lone Star and San Jacinto College, for our students to be able to take these assessments so that they can then become qualified to take dual credit classes. So we took that on to say, we want our students to be able to test with us in district at no cost whatsoever, and so we instituted that for the first time last year, we saw an additional 565 students take the TSI on a Saturday on their own, and 65% of those students showed another degree of college readiness just by taking it on Saturday, so they're now eligible to take some of those dual credit classes that we have through San Jac and through Lone Star College. Along with that, we've added Texas College Bridge for all of our high schools this year. Texas College Bridge is a college prep course for our students, that those that are not able to be successful on the TSI assessment, they can complete this college prep course, and at the conclusion of it, they're awarded with a certificate that grants them a TSI exemption that they can take to Lone Star and immediately enroll in college-level classes. So again, very minimal in terms of barriers for our students to be able to take and enroll in college-level classes. We've doubled the number of UT Onramps courses that we have this year, this is a partnership with the University of Texas, it's a dual enrollment model that allows our students to engage with college-level coursework, and the benefit with UT Onramps is the fact that our students don't have to take the TSI in order to enroll in the class, so we see a huge benefit for our students going into this year, again, our numbers have doubled, and then going into next year, Onramps has just told us that Onramps Economics is now available, and we've been selected as one of the districts to roll that out, and we know that all of our comprehensive high schools are going to be on board with that, and we know our numbers are going to be up because it's an advanced course with weighted credit, but also it's part of a graduation requirement, so really a lot of benefit for our students to engage with that. We've seen increased enrollment in our Dual Credit Summer Academy, I'll talk in detail about that in just a moment, and then this year we've committed to providing access to all of our kids as it relates to college entrance exams. We just got done with the PSAT this past week, and then we've got our ACT and pre-ACT as well as SAT coming up in the spring during the school day, so kids don't have to come up on a Saturday, and we've paid for it as the district. So again, our kids in our district, this is innovative, where they can have access to both the SAT and the ACT assessments free of charge during the school day, no extra effort, if you're showing up, you're going to get access to those assessments. So some of the data that we see with our AP exams this past spring is we saw about a 64% success rate as it relates to our advanced placement courses. Along with that, we mentioned our Dual Credit Summer Academy is an opportunity for our students to get original credit through dual credit, weighted credit through San Jac and Lone Star, 85% of our students that took summer courses through our community colleges were successful and got college credit. Along with that, we see about a 75% success rate for college credit for our UT Onramps students. But I just want to share some of the enrollment numbers with you, so you see what we're looking at year over year. So you see that, again, we've doubled the number of offerings in our district going into this year, and again, historically with UT Onramps, if we keep to that trend of about 75% yield, we're seeing a massive number of our kids that are going to get that CCMR indicator just with Onramps alone, and that doesn't even include the addition of economics going into the next school year. Our Dual Credit Summer Academy, I'm very pleased.
Could you just let everyone know, so they have an understanding, just a thumbnail sketch of what the Onramps is?
So, so UT Onramps is a dual enrollment model with the University of Texas, so our students are enrolled with a University of Texas professor that teaches them, along with a high school instructor that facilitates the high school course. A lot of benefits for both the student as well as the district, and I'll start with the students in that, again, they don't need the TSI in order to enroll in the course. Students engage with the coursework, with the high school and college-level coursework at the same time, but the greatest benefit of all, I think, for our students is the fact that they get to decide at the end of the course whether or not they want to accept credit or not. So a student who makes an A in an Onramps Biology course, they're going to get that college credit for Biology, earn as you go, it's not like an AP exam that's given one test one time, they earn it as they go, and a student says, I made an A, I'm going to take this A and I'm going to take it to the university. A student that makes a C, well, they might have a choice to make. If they're going into a science field, they may say to themselves, you know what, I, I got the experience of being in a college course, but I can do better when I get into college, so I'll forego the credit and it won't hurt their GPA, they, it doesn't generate an academic record at all because a student declined the credit. So hugely advantageous for our students to take part in Onramps. Again, with our Dual Credit Summer Academy, this past summer was the first year we offered both a face-to-face as well as a virtual option with our partner colleges, and again, you see the enrollments have just doubled almost year over year, and so we're seeing access again for our kids to be able to take our college-level courses and seeing that they're being very successful as it relates to that. Now, I know Mr. Lesweare is going to come up and speak on a few of the career supports that we have in district.
Good evening, so I'm really excited to talk to you about some of the amazing things going on in CTE for the district, particularly what is helping support our children to achieving their future goals, their dreams. You've heard lots of, even from this meeting, about our awesome and amazing CTE exploration wheel for our sixth-grade students. This program has grown just in one year, an additional 500 students are now serviced by this program, we've added four additional teachers, it's at all of our middle schools, and my favorite story from it is that I have a counselor from Kingwood Middle School who called me the other day and said, I went from kids wanting to be vets and engineers to a ballistic forensics expert. I don't know what to do with a sixth grader who wants to be a ballistic forensics expert. I think that's a wonderful problem to have, because now we get to help these children achieve very specific dreams, and it helps them go a little bit deeper into their programs as they get into high school. We've also identified a few areas where we can grab some of our, our industry-based certifications or our IBCs and integrate them with our curriculum, and so we are offering free opportunity in the classes during the school day where these students can take industry certifications, can be prepared appropriately, and then leave those courses with, again, an industry credential, so we're really excited about that. We've also added a lot of options, so TEA has released additional options for, for those industry-based certifications that count towards our CCMR. We, as a department, in just the four years that TEA has been identifying them, we have gone from 10 to over 50 available industry-based certifications through Umbel ISD, and we're really proud of those, those are the job-ready, go get a job out of high school that we're super excited about. Additionally, we spent a lot of time with our courses and with the counselors, matching up each of our CTE courses, and we have over 170 of them, CTE courses with those industry-based certifications, either what industry-based certifications they should be preparing and taking in that class, or what skills they, they should be preparing for so that they're ready in the next year or to, to achieve one of those industry-based certifications. That list is being used in our one-on-one meetings with our counselors, so that they can identify with the students what they should be working towards, as well as with our teachers and with their supervisors, and setting goals and helping make sure that we are all on the same page as to what we're trying to help prepare our students for. Lastly, we, as a department, have worked very closely again with counseling and making sure that we give recommendations to our students as to how to achieve their dreams. With 170-plus CTE courses, it can be a little daunting to know which courses I need to take to get to those industry certifications or to best prepare myself for what comes after high school. So as a student now enrolls and what they want to do for their four-year plan in high school, CTE has worked with counseling so that it maps out for them and pre-populates for them some courses. Now, they still have the ability to delete courses and select what they want, we value very much as a district, the ability for students to choose what they want to do, but we also want to give them the information that will get them to that end goal in terms of a pathway for their courses. Lastly, I just wanted to show you a little bit of what we do with those industry-based certifications, again, these job-ready ones, you can see a little bit of our, our dip where we had our COVID years where Dr. Lee was explaining that we had a kind of some time where they weren't being able to prepare appropriately those hands-on skills, and some of those certifications weren't even available during COVID for them to go and take. It's hard to do certain skills virtually, and so that we had students miss out on those opportunities, but we are very pleased to tell you that we have increased significantly since then, you can see on our last column there, and expect an additional increase in the, in the coming years for those industry-based certifications that our students are achieving. With that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Lee. With that, I will turn it back over to Dr. Lee.
So, we've said this, and I know I'm going to say it again, but it holds true. Every time we talk about our CCMR, our college career, military readiness, our personalized pathways for our students, and making sure everything is done, it all comes back to the glue, which are our counselors. Our counselors are the ones who work day in and day out with everybody. They work with all of our CTE teachers, our Advanced Academics teachers, our administrators. They're working with our students. The data that they have on every child is just enormous throughout this process. I'm going to turn it over to Ty Hobbs, our Director of Personalized Counseling, so she can highlight not only just the amazing counselors we have, but some of the specific things we have been focusing on last year and this year as it relates to CCMR.
As Dr. Lee said, our counselors play an integral role in college and career and military readiness. They are the glue that holds everything together, working with the students day in and day out to ensure that they're ready for the future. In previous years, counselors conducted a multitude of tasks, and they were non-counseling-related tasks, tasks such as facilitating 504s, acting as the testing coordinator on campuses, as well as performing other duties as assigned, such as lunch duty, hall duty, bus duty. I must say today, with our focus, UMBLEISD's focus on personalized counseling, the addition of 504 specialists to facilitate those 504 meetings, and removing the non-counseling-related duties off of the counselor's table, that has really provided them with an opportunity to work hand-in-hand with our students to ensure that we are addressing their social, emotional needs, taking care of their academics and academic planning, and ensuring that they're on the right path to meet their graduation requirements. In saying that, on the elementary level and personalized counseling, our personalized counseling sessions include student interest surveys. On the elementary level, students have the capability of taking interest surveys so that they can find out who they are. They can identify their strengths, their weaknesses, their likes, and their dislikes. Counselors are also bringing awareness to career opportunities via their guidance lessons, campus activities, and they're also allowing the students to participate in career awareness programs such as PAWS and our Naviance program. Counselors have spotlighted endorsements. So, each quarter, our elementary counselors are spotlighting a specific endorsement and bringing guests in to share about careers associated or related to that endorsement so our students can see firsthand what it looks like and have the opportunity to ask questions. And our counselors are also working with our teachers on the elementary level so that they can tie in those student interest surveys and allow the teachers the opportunity to incorporate the students' interest in a lesson for the week and some for the month. On our secondary level, personalized counseling includes personalized college, career, and military-ready plans for our students. That's their graduation plans, their four-year plans. They're working with the students individually to help them map out a plan for the next four years and beyond. Student-driven CCMR goals. Our students this year have been tasked with coming up and deriving measurable CCMR goals, goals that they can achieve and attain, and goals that are realistic. Career exploration. We work very closely with Dr. Uticrit and Larkin. We collaborate very well together. And so, with the CTE Wheel, counselors are able to expose students to different careers and different courses, and also, the endorsement surveys. They provide the students on the secondary level with an endorsement survey to allow them, A, to select an endorsement because we're exposing them to those endorsements on the elementary level. And when they get to middle school, by the time they're in the eighth grade, the expectation is that they will feel comfortable enough selecting an endorsement. When we get to high school, we want to ensure that they've selected the appropriate endorsement. And so, they have the opportunity to stick with the endorsement that they've selected in the eighth grade or to make changes in possibly the ninth or the 10th grade. And also, our CTE programs of study. We definitely hope that once students select an endorsement, that they follow a specific program of study. And I would like to say that this year, each campus will host a college and career night, a parent night, so that parents will have the opportunity to meet with staff, to meet with CTE teachers, as well as our Advanced Academic teachers, so that they can learn more about the programs that we have to offer here in UMBLEISD. Our goal is to ensure that our students graduate and that they're prepared for the future. Thank you.
Dr. Lee?
So, as I was listening to just the amazing work that this team has done, I was reminded... So, last night, I had the opportunity to be a part of the Leadership Academy that the Assistant Superintendents host and work with. And one of the elementary principals stated that she was most moved when Dr. Fagan made the comment that all children, regardless of e-school placement and classes, deserve a quality education. And so, as I was listening to this, I was thinking, you know, the work that Ann and I do is about making sure that students have an equitable instructional opportunity, no matter what campus they're on. And I'm thinking, and what Dr. Lee and her team have put together is to ensure that our children have that same equitable opportunity. So, it's no longer... When I went into high school, I was very well aware, even though that was a long time ago, because my parents were part of the educational system. I had an advantage. And I see that with so many of our students. And now, because of the opportunities, whether it's TSI, or it's Onramps, or it's the personalized counseling, regardless, all of our kids have that opportunity to advance in college, career, military readiness. So, I think that when you look at both ends of that spectrum, when you look at the first and second goal, which is the third-grade math and reading, and you look at the last, it really does pull all of that together in a nice package, right? So, from the beginning to the end, we have this differentiation, this personalization that Dr. Fagan has really pushed all of us to include. So, I just wanted to say, nice job, and thank you for helping me to realize that as I'm listening to the work that you've done. So, I want to close this evening with just our proposed targets. We did... Most of this is not new. I will tell you that with the work that the Advanced Academics team has made, they've made some adjustments in regards to those goals. So, we are leaving our district goals, our yearly goals, targets for the same this year, even though we saw gains at the very beginning because, quite frankly, we're up against STAR redesign, we're up against everybody online, we're up... I mean, the list goes on and on. And so, until we know where our students are going to fall, although based on what we've seen with our last year's data, we're confident, and we may then, at that point, make an adjustment in our targets. But for right now, they are going to remain the same. You see those on the screen in front of you. Our progress measures we put in place last year, and again, the last one is that all children are going to grow in their reading, and that is something that I know Lucy and Kristy have emphasized, the principals have emphasized, and it's something that we definitely take great pride in. The same is with math, and again, you can see the growth from 21 to 22. And we are anticipating, as Dr. Fagan pointed out with the introduction of math assessments, that we will have that same focus on student progress on an individual manner like we do with literacy. And then, with our college, career, military readiness, and we've done a pretty good job of explaining, I think Dr. Lee explained that this is a lagging indicator. The goal itself is remaining the same. What we did change, so even though from 21 to 25, we're seeing 42%, what changed is our progress measures. And again, it's about how we, as UMBLEISD, are going to measure our growth and not just look to the state to make those determinations. And so, after many conversations, these were the adjustments that we made. And Melissa, I don't know if you want to come up and talk a little bit more about those?
Sure. I think one of the primary ones that we adjusted was the third one, CCMR Progress Measure Three. The way we previously had the goal written was unattainable because students don't just jump into JRTC Three without going into JRTC One and Two. And even if we did try to do that and allow them to skip it, we'd be pulling from other CTE programs of study, and we'd be competing against ourselves. So, we rewrote this more as a retention goal for keeping kids in JRTC and looking at that for JRTC One to Two to Three.
Thank you.
And that's it. And so, again, you now have, you have been fully informed on both literacy and now CCMR. And I don't know if there are any questions?
Well, don't go anywhere.
I was hoping if I ran back to my chair.
So, first, I'd like to say, thank you all so much for the presentation. We are really proud of the work that you're doing for the district. I mean, it's truly amazing to see things come to fruition. I know Dr. Fagan and all of you have been working in a progression to get to a certain point. And my six years here, it's been wonderful to actually see it come to fruition, is the first thing I'd like to say. But the other reason why I say, "Don't go anywhere," because I know Mrs. Morrison isn't here tonight, but she and I, you talked about an advantage of having educators as parents. She and I, a lot of times, have an advantage because we have educational leadership degrees and backgrounds, right? And a lot of us up here have children in the district, you know? So, we know CTE, CTE Wheel, Onramps, what Approaches means, and that means on grade level. Some people don't know what that means. So, I do think there may be some questions from the board so that you can provide a little bit more clarification on some of those areas. So, are there any questions?
I just want to highlight a couple of things.
Yes, of course.
So, a couple of things. So, Dr. Uticrit, the work that he is doing is removing all barriers for all kids. You know, typically, it's a small group of students whose parents want them to be college-bound, they go take the ACT on Saturday and those kind of assessments. And yet, a lot of students take those assessments and get their scores back, and they're stunned by the score and realizing what that means for their future and what's possible. So, having it in school, having it free, removes all barriers for all kids, and I think that's huge. And Larkin, he really, he doesn't sing his own praises enough. A lot of the certifications that these students are getting, pharmacy techs, and, you know, these are big-time certifications. He's got a brand-new barbering program, cosmetology, HVAC. These are big-time certifications, and they're careers. They're like the welders. You know, those are one of those things hard to do online. But, you know, it was. But the welders, they're graduating, they can go right into the field and have a quality-of-life salary and move on. Or, a lot of these students use that as their job while they go to college, which prevents them from working at Pizza Hut like me, nothing wrong with that, but certainly, being a welder probably generates a bit more income. Drone pilots. So, the list goes on and on and on with what this team is doing to really empower kids, no matter their backgrounds, their histories, their financial situations, to determine who and what they want to be, and then help them get there, and removing all the barriers. And along the way, you know, Ty mentioned this just briefly, making sure that they are healthy and well, both mentally and physically, and having that connection to a counselor for any type of concern they have in their life. You know, educators are the number-one reporters of child abuse. Now, we have human trafficking to consider. There's a lot of different things. And so, that one-on-one with a counselor is critical to all aspects of their success. So, anyway, this team was just a dream a few years ago. Melissa sent that, and it's true. And today, they are absolutely making it all happen in UMBLEISD. So, thank you so much for all of your work and your success. And these are all, I mean, these are going to be yesterday's numbers. I can just feel it. I'm going to be so impressed, and it's not going to be because we gave everybody the OSHA exam. And I love that. I love that.
Any other questions?
I did, I had one.
Yes.
So, on one of the initial slides, it was a 14% gain, I think, in reading, 10% gain in math, right?
Yes, on STAR.
That's what I was... So, was that year-over-year? What was that from pandemic to now?
I want to make sure I'm on the right. Is this...
Right there. So, what was that 14% gain?
It was from the year before.
Okay, so, wow.
And I'm making sure my partner, Dr. Rone, he's nodding his head, yes. Yes, it's from the previous year. Yes, sir.
Ann, I just have to say this because this is like part of my heart, and that is not because we focus on drilling and killing STAR. That is because we work on real literacy assessments and strategies and help teachers, help students do the things that they need to do, and then, the STAR just goes up.
Mr. Sutton?
You touched on this in your comments, and I said this at breakfast with the board the other day because I don't think a lot of people understand this, and that is, this is meets or above, and when you look at that, it says 52%. So, if you don't understand it, you would think 48% are below grade level, and that is not the case. The whole accountability changed, I'm going to guess, probably 10 years ago. And the STAR exam is built two grade levels above where you're at. So, a third grader that's meeting is actually at the fifth grade level, basically. Not always, but basically, that's what we're looking at. So, a student that is approaching is actually meeting the expectations on grade level. So, a lot of people don't understand that. And then, I know we're not talking about A to F tonight, but A to F is also being changed again because, and there's been a lot of talk about this, about the garbage that's written in the newspapers, and that is not comparing apples to apples either. It's set up in a way to where a school or a school district can have, say, a 60% graduation rate, but because their growth measurement was greater than their achievement measurement, they get to use the growth. Well, if you have a school or a school district that way underperformed or didn't show up for class during COVID, and then, they showed a lot of growth or progression in 2021, then their accountability rating went way up. I know there were several schools, I got comments, that they had been on the F rating with TEA for years, and all of a sudden, they get a B. Well, that's how that happens. We, on the other hand, didn't have a lot of learning loss from one year to the next, so we have to rely on the STAR exam as far as TEA accountability, and that measurement, whether it's growth or it's STAR exam, is 70% of the score. So, you've got to understand where these numbers are coming from to understand what the rating means, and this is the biggie right here. The meets or above is really way above grade level. It's not on grade level. Approaches is grade level. So, just think about that, and if you have questions on that, there are people that are a lot smarter than me, standing over here, and Dr. Fagan, that can explain that, but that's the layman's way of understanding this accountability system. So, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7B, Summary Report of English Learners in UMBLEISD. Any questions or discussions from the board regarding this item? Item 7C, Intruder Detection Audit Findings. I believe Mr. Perkins will share the findings of the audit.
There it goes.
Yes, now.
All right. The Texas School Safety Center conducted an intruder detection audit pursuant to updated legal requirements. Two schools were reviewed. One finding was identified across all campuses reviewed. All corrective actions have been completed at this time. Further details has been provided to the board in executive session.
Thank you very much. Any questions or discussion? Thank you. Item 7D, Report on Delinquent Tax Questions for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. I understand we have a presentation on this item. Hi, there you are.
The delinquent tax attorney is over. Well, while you're walking up there, I just want to take a second. Well, while you're walking up there, I just want to take a second to say thank you for all your support of the district and our students. You guys are always at the livestock auction and buying animals, usually small animals.
Yes. Donnie won't let us buy a big animal.
But sincerely, it's, Umbel ISD is about family and partnership, and you all are wonderful partners, not just in delinquent tax collections, but also in supporting our students, so thank you for that.
Thank you. We enjoy doing it. I'm Greg East. This is my law partner, Melissa Valdez. We're going to present our annual report, and Melissa's going to start us off, and then I'll finish. Donnie wanted to be here tonight, and he could not, so he said to send his regrets, but he is still around, so don't worry. All right, you ready?
Thank you very much for having us, Dr. Fagan, Ms. Dixon, and the board. We really do enjoy being here with the district. Greg and I are both residents of Umbel and Fall Creek, and it's our community, so we're really lucky to be able to contribute. So I'm going to start by going over the 2021 tax calendar year. Properties are valued, make sure you can hear me, by the appraisal district as of January 1st, 2021. October 2021, the original tax bills were mailed for those 2021 taxes. On February 1st of 2022, the taxes became delinquent. That's when your penalty and interest start to accrue on those taxes. May of '22, a notice of collection penalty is mailed to the taxpayers, and that's giving them a final notice to pay the taxes before they're turned over for collection. And then on July 1st, anything that's still delinquent is turned over to us for collection. The 2021 tax year, there were $262 million in base tax due. The fantastic tax office that you have here collects 98.48% of that. Absolutely. I mean, really, they do the heavy lifting. What we are working on is 1.52% of the taxes. So, you know, what we take is tiny compared to what they do.
They have to get that with business costs, but they still support the.
Exactly. That's exactly right. Small animals, right. So I said that it's a little less than $4 million for the 2021 tax year, the 1.52%. This is showing you the current turnover for July 1st for 2021, like I said, is less than 2%, $3.6 million. And this is showing you that turnover over the past few years, which you'll see, there's very little change in that over time. I'm going to turn it over to Greg for the rest of that. Is there any question on those first few slides?
All right. Thank you. This is a look of how much we've collected for each current tax year in the first 12 months of collections. So the 2020 tax year, we took over July last year and finished the first year in June of this year, collected nearly 60% of that. That's a little bit less than normal, and that's really due to three accounts. Two of them are being corrected by the appraisal district and account for 5% just for those two. And there's another one that's in bankruptcy, which is about another 1%. So it's a little bit lower than normal, but not really, the problem not really with the appraisal district, we can't really do anything other than just be aggravated and hope it gets done. And both of those have been corrected and wish had done a few months ago, but, you know, it's not our part of the job. This is a look of your 2021 tax roll, just what we started working on a few months ago. And you see like 5%. We have marked as CAD right in the middle. Those are accounts that are having their value challenged with the appraisal district. By this point, that usually means that they're in lawsuits with the appraisal district. Courts working a little bit slower than they used to, still with COVID, so hopefully those will be gone by next year. And you see, the other, why is none of these percentages are unusual. You have about 9% that are under deferral. If you're over 65 or disabled, you can apply for a tax deferral. That means we keep that deferral as long as it's your homestead, and we do not work on it, and you get charged less interest than you normally would be. So when we see accounts that we think would be eligible for a deferral, we send them an application because we don't want them to think, pay it, and then realize six months later that could have received a deferral and we tricked them somehow. So that, really nothing unusual. We see about 10% in litigation. The courts in Harris County for our tax cases, we're still doing cases on Zoom for almost all of the courts. That can be an experience, and goes a little bit slower. It's better than not doing anything, but it's a little bit slower than normally would. They're hoping that they'll be back in court in person, hopefully before too long, because it's been a long two-and-a-half years. And this is just showing how much is due for all your taxes. You see, even as the first year passes, we keep working on the older years, and you'll collect more and more of it as time goes by, as we resolve them through litigation or bankruptcy cases get wrapped up and that kind of thing. Really nothing unusual. This year, one thing we did that is different than July, the state of Texas has a program to help homeowners in which they will pay property taxes, mortgage payments, their past due HOA fees, that kind of thing. The comptroller assets include their flyer in our mass mail-out, which we did in July, and so we may see some impact from that. It's hard to tell. The taxpayers apply, the state says they'll review the application, make a decision one way or the other within a few weeks. The state just pays it, so it's not a loan. The state just pays the taxes or whatever else is due. So we'll see how that goes until they run out of money, I guess. But that's the only thing that's really unusual this year is the Texas Homeowners Assistance Fund. So if you hear anyone that's talking about issues, that may be something for them to look at. That, that's all we have. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Well, I just would like to say thank you very much for the presentation. Yeah, I can't help you with Harris County courts, but since I represent the 24 school districts in Harris County on HCAD, if you ever need any assistance there, you know, we do have a board liaison that we can connect you with. And part of that, you know, we changed our name. We're now Harris Central Appraisal District. I think everyone felt like we were an entity of Harris County, but we're not. We're of the state, so, yes.
Tried to explain it to many taxpayers over the years, and it doesn't usually go well, so I think it was a smart change.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Our last item, 7E, Financial Services Reports, is a monthly administrative item. Any questions or discussion from the board regarding this item? Seeing none, moving to our closing items. Are there any topics for future board business? The time is now 8:37 PM. This meeting is now adjourned.